But her initials are Hillary Clinton. And, um, in my town hall meetings, it's really easy. You raise your hand, you ask a question, I answer it. That's it. Yes, sir.
I'm not playing into your hands. We're interested, I'm interested in finding the most electable candidate to win that election. Right now, and what that's gonna take the whole party, not a divided party.
Yes, sir.
And right now, there's some people that are dividing the party. What's your position on immigration?
Uh, listen, my position on immigration is real simple and doable. And we have three things we, five things we need to do in different categories. First one is, to secure the border is our first obligation. Because if we don't have a nation of secure borders, then we're not really a nation. So, how do we secure the border? First, I would put walls or fences up in the most populated areas. Now, please, everybody, do not go for this, "I'm gonna build a wall along the entire 2,000 miles of the southern border." Please, don't go for that. It's not going to happen. And I'll tell you something else that's not gonna happen. I've met twice now with President Pena Nieto of Mexico. I went on a trade mission to Mexico last fall and met with him. He's come to the United States and asked for a meeting with me, and I met with him. He's a very nice guy. He ain't paying for the wall, okay? I don't care who asks him. I don't care how beautiful the wall is. I don't care how beautiful the door to the wall is. I, uh, he's not, he's not paying for it. You're paying for it. And we don't need it. In the most populated areas, I would put walling or fencing to slow down those folks. Second, we need to use the technology we have to monitor the border. So, let's use stationary cameras in certain places of the border, and let's use drones with cameras on them to fly back and forth across the border to give us real-time information on where to deploy resources. If there's something happening in a remote area of the border, then we can send people there, and that's cost-effective. Third, we need to embed FBI, DEA, and ATF agents with our Border Patrol agents. Because they're the ones who are expert at stopping guns and drugs and detecting who's carrying them. Let's put our best people on the border on guns and drugs to try to keep those things from coming up across the southern border. Fourth is E-Verify. Every business in this country should be required to use E-Verify. And that will not only help with stopping the flow of people here, because if they know they can't get a job, they're not coming. Because unlike what Hillary Clinton thinks, they don't come here to vote. They come here to work. And E-Verify will not only help with those folks, but it'll help with the folks who are already here. Because if the folks who are already here are working, now are subject to E-Verify, and they can't get another job, they're going home. Because the only reason for them to be here is to work. Um, the fifth point is this, that 40% of the 11 million people who are here illegally didn't come over the southern border. They came through our airports on visas. We invited them. We invited them to be students here, we invited them to be tourists here, we invited them to work for a certain period of time. And then they overstayed their visa. Now, I got a lot of attention from the press back in the summer when I said, "If Federal Express can track a package from the minute it leaves your door till the minute it gets to the door," right? You go on the computer, "Oh, now it's on the truck." Okay. Now it's in the airport hangar. Okay, now it's on the plane, it's flying to wherever it's flying to. Now it's in another truck. Now it got to the place where you want it to. Then why can't we track the people who come into this country on visas? Now, of course, the press had an outrageous reaction to this. The headlines were, "Christie Wants to Track Immigrants Like Packages." And I got asked on CNN, "Are you talking about putting a barcode on someone or a chip in them when they enter the country?" No, okay? I didn't think I needed to explain to people who English is the language they use, you know, to communicate to us every day in the press, that that's called an analogy. We don't need to put barcodes or chips on people. We already have them. They're these, fingerprints. Every human being has a unique fingerprint. My plan would be, when folks come in on a visa, any type of visa, we take their fingerprints, we put it into a database. And when people who are here on a visa want to access services, everything from buying an airline ticket to renting a car to signing up for a class at a university, they need to give their thumbprint. And if it shows on the database they've overstayed their welcome, that's when we tap on the shoulder and say, "Time to go home." We take them into custody, and we send them home. This would be like, I'm sure many of you will invite some friends or some relatives two weeks from yesterday for Thanksgiving. Now, you invite them for Thanksgiving, and let's say, the next morning, you head upstairs and you go to your guest room, and they're still there. Now, you wanted them for Thanksgiving, that was fine. You weren't looking for them for the rest of the weekend. Um, it's fine to invite people here on a visa, but they need to stay for the amount of time they're allowed to stay, and they need to go home. That's 40% of the 11 million problem. All those things I just outlined are things that are absolutely affordable, they're doable very quickly, and they will help to stop this problem. Do not believe for a moment that building a 2,000-mile wall is gonna stop the problem. Because I'll tell you this about people. I've never met a wall that a determined human being can get over, under, or around. We need to do a multi-layered approach to this, and then and only then will we have control of our borders again. And then we can deal with the 11 million people inside the country, a lot of which I think will be dealt with by E-Verify. Let me tell you what I do to those employers, by the way. If you hired somebody illegal, you get fined double what you made off the person. Business would stop hiring people right away. Because they're in business to make money, not to lose money. So, that's what I do on immigration, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, this is, to me, is a real important question. Uh, it doesn't affect a lot of Americans, but it affects enough that, uh, according to Frontline on PBS, Washington DC is the world's capital of underage sex trafficking. Okay? And, uh, makes you wonder what your congressmen and senators are up to. Anyway, uh, if this was your daughter, this would probably, or son, it would probably be the only issue.
Sure.
What would you propose to do to clean that pestilence and bring the hole up?
Well, let me tell you a few things about my background first on this issue, because I think it's important for you to know. When I was United States Attorney for New Jersey, um, I did more sex trafficking cases than any US attorney in the country. This is an enormous problem in our country, both for young women mostly in our country and young women who are trafficked into our country to become sex slaves essentially. And there are human trafficking statutes now on the federal books that need to be used much more aggressively. Not only inside the country, but also against those countries who allow these young women, in the main, sometimes men, but mostly young women, who get trafficked into this country to be put into slavery. Uh, I did a case in New Jersey where, uh, five young women were trafficked into this country from South America. They were forced to commit sex acts for 12 hours a day, six days a week. And they were kept in a small apartment, lying on mattresses on the floor of a small apartment. We were able to break up that ring, we were able to put those men who did that to them in jail, and we were able to free those young women. Uh, we need to focus on that. And I did as US Attorney, and when I'm President, I will appoint an Attorney General who will make human trafficking a top priority, um, in this country from Washington DC to Los Angeles, California, and everywhere in between. Because the exploitation of human beings is a sin against God, and it is not what our country stands for. And so, no matter where it's happening or what it's doing, the US Attorneys that I appoint will be charged with making human trafficking a top priority. And we can do this. We have the resources to do it, and we have the laws to be able to do it. We don't need any new laws. We just need to enforce them. And that's what I would do as President. Sure.
Yeah, Trey Gowdy, Attorney General, maybe?
Listen, he's a good guy. But you know what? I'm not gonna get into picking Attorneys General or Vice Presidents or anything else until all the votes are counted. I'm a superstitious man, and I, I'm not gonna get into that. But I have great respect for Congressman Gowdy, um, and, and he has done an outstanding job in Congress. He's done an outstanding job chairing that Committee on Benghazi. Um, and so, he's certainly someone who would be on anybody's list, but we're not doing that now. You start counting our chickens before they're hatched, everybody, you wind up going home early. I'm not gonna do that. But, um, I will take, I'll have a suggestion box. I'll take all suggestions after you elect to be President of the United States. All right? Yes, sir.
Governor, I know you've been really supportive of food banks and emergency-
No, we don't need, I think it's small enough. We don't need microphones. We, we don't need microphones this morning.
Governor, I know you've been really supportive of food banks and the emergency food system in New Jersey, but with 1 in 7 Americans food insecure, what is your plan to take that to the national level and address the issues of hunger and poverty in America?
Well, I think it has to be a partnership between, um, the private sector and nonprofits and the government. I, I don't think the government should be doing all of this stuff, because the more we do it, the more we mess it up. And, and that's a simple fact of the matter. I don't need to give Washington more responsibility. But, we have a great network, as you know, across this country of nonprofit organizations, non-governmental organizations that are community-based, that help to feed the hungry every day in this country. And part of food insecurity also, though, is that, um, in, in individual states, there are certain places, especially in some of our urban areas, where they have no supermarkets. So, it's not that they don't even have the money to buy. They can't buy good food. And those are, you know, called food deserts around the country. And, and so, one of the things I've done as Governor is to try to work with the private sector to say, "Listen, we'll work with you. We'll give you some tax incentives to come in and put good supermarkets in some of these areas you don't have them." So that young people can get fresh produce. Now, in Iowa, it's a, it's, it's a mystery to anybody, right? How you couldn't get fresh produce. There are cities in this nation where young men and women have never had fresh produce. Never had fresh corn, never had fresh beans, never had fresh spinach, never had any of that. And it leads to an enormous, not only hunger problem, but obesity problem in this country, because they're eating the very worst foods. Because that's all they can get at the local 7-Eleven, which is all they have to get food. So, this problem is multi-layered, right? There are some who just don't have any food to eat. There are some who have really bad food to eat, and it's affecting their health. So, I think what we need to do is to coordinate state to state, um, and these networks of nonprofits. And the government needs to help fund that a bit. And we need to encourage folks to fund it privately as well. You know, one of the, uh, one of the things that I, I really admire beside his music of my, uh, my friend Bruce Springsteen from New Jersey, and if you're from New Jersey, you have to like Bruce Springsteen. I'm sorry, I don't agree with his politics, um, but, um, if you're a New Jersey kid my age, you grew up with Bruce Springsteen. One of the things I do admire about Bruce is, at every one of his concerts, he encourages his fans and actually makes collections for whatever the local food bank is in that town where he's playing. And he donates all that money, and then he matches the money, whatever they raise, from himself to those local food banks. He understands, and I understand, that it's those local networks that people feel comfortable going to. It doesn't feel like a handout from the government. It feels like help from your neighbors. And that's what we need to be encouraging in this country for the folks who are really suffering. And so, as President, I would be talking about this. I would help to fund some of it through the Department of Agriculture. And then ultimately, um, want to encourage our local, um, nonprofits to continue to do the great work that they do. No one in America should go to sleep hungry. And there's no reason we should, given the money we're spending to do it. We're just not doing it the right way. These local organizations are the best way to do it. And that's why I would do it. You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Um, how would you or any other conservative candidate compete in a field with an electorate that seems to comprise of low-information voters that want free stuff and a rock star for President?
Well, I'll tell you this about Hillary Clinton's no rock star. So, let's start with that. Um, and she's not gonna be seen as a rock star. But the bigger question is, what do you speak to when you speak to folks across the country, no matter who the voters are? Do you speak to their fears, or do you speak to what they aspire to be? See, I think most Americans, not all, but I think most Americans still aspire to something better than what they have. If not for themselves, for their children. Um, I don't believe this free stuff problem. I know it was talked about a lot in the last election, and I know if you watch the Democratic debate, they're gonna, they were telling everybody what they were gonna give them for free. I mean, there was more, the word "free" was used more than the word "democracy" was used in that Democratic debate. But I will tell you that, what I will say is what I said at the debate the other night. When someone tells you they're giving something for free, put your hand on your wallet. Because that means that somebody's tax rate's going up to 70 or 80%. And the fact is that, of course, they're not gonna tell you that, because no fool would be, you know, smart enough to vote for somebody who said they're gonna raise your tax rates to 70 or 80%. But let me tell you, that's the only way they're gonna do the things they're doing. And I don't think most Americans want that. So, I think we have to talk to them about, what's the alternative? If you get all this free stuff and not for free, it's gonna be taxes to 70, 80%. If you ever become successful in your life, you're not gonna be able to keep that money. Someone else has taken it. And they need someone who they feel like they can trust. And I don't think that's Hillary Clinton. So, put me on that stage with her. We'll make the argument. I'm not afraid of this. I think candidates in the past have been a little afraid of this. I'm not afraid of the argument. I am pro-democracy. I am pro-free enterprise. I am pro-open markets, because that's what's made America the richest, most successful country in the history of the world. And I'm ready to make that argument to the American people, and I think it's gonna be a winning argument to them. I really do. Other questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, as President, Governor, what would be your first two priorities?
First two priorities. Priority number one would be to change the tax system in this country, because we need economic growth. And, and we gotta change the tax system. And it would be the first bill that I would send to Congress. Because, you know, last quarter, we had 1 and 1/2% GDP growth. I mean, we're sliding back towards a recession, and none of us wanna go there. Fact is that we need to stop this tax system from being what it's doing to our country, which is putting a wet blanket on the country. The President's raised taxes. He's made the code more complicated. And, you know, the American people generally think that the tax code, they feel like the tax code is rigged for the rich. You know why? Because it is. It is rigged for the rich. So, here's what I would do. I would get rid of every loophole and every deduction, except for two. The home mortgage interest deduction and the charitable contribution deduction. For one reason for each. Home mortgage deduction, because I want as many Americans as possible to be able to buy a home for their family and have that as their main investment in their life. I think that's a good thing for a family, and I think it's a good thing for our economy. I want to encourage it. Second, it's because of what I just talked to him about. I want folks to be encouraged to give to the charities that they believe are helping their community, their state, and their nation the best. The, the, the causes that they feel passionate about. It shouldn't be them giving me their money, and then me deciding, "Oh, I like this and that and that." Because it's always easy to spend other people's money. I want you to spend your money on the cause that you feel is right. So, if you believe that hunger in America is the biggest cause that you can support, and you want to donate some of your money to that cause, God bless you, I want you to do it, and I want the government to encourage you to do that. But all the rest of them, go. If you do that, you can lower the rates down to where they were when Ronald Reagan was President. 28% on the top end, 8% on the low end, and then another rate in the middle. Three rates, that's it. You can do your taxes in 15 minutes. Here's how much I made. Here's how much I paid in interest for my mortgage. Here's how much I donated to charity. There's the number, multiply it times the bracket that I fit in, send my check, and be done. 15 minutes, you do your taxes. And you imagine how many IRS agents we could fire if we had that going on? They would no longer be in the middle of our lives, all right? That would unleash enormous economic growth in this country, along with changing the business tax. We have the highest business tax in the world at 35%. And we're one of only a handful of nations that double-tax our businesses. If they make money overseas, they get taxed there, then they bring the money back home, we tax them again. Well, you know what they're doing now? Not bringing the money back home. They keep it overseas. There's over $2 trillion in profits from American companies that they're keeping overseas. If they brought it home, they could invest it in creating jobs and opportunities here. So, I would lower the tax rate to 25%, get rid of their loopholes and deductions as well. They pay a 25% tax, and I would give them a one-time chance to bring those profits back and tax it at 8 and 3/4%. Bring it home and invest it in American jobs. And if you do that, that 8 and 3/4%, because right now, we're getting 35% is zero. And even as a political science major in college, I know 35% of zero is zero. All right? 8 and 3/4% of $2 trillion is a lot of money. And we can use some of that money to do things that we need to do in this country, like rebuild our infrastructure, without having to raise the gas tax on the American people. Use that money that should've been here anyway, now we get it back over here. That would be priority number one. Priority number two is really important also. It would be to rebuild our alliances around the world, off of what I talked about in the beginning. In my first 100 days, I would invite the Prime Minister of Canada, the President of Mexico, the Prime Minister of Great Britain, the President of France, the Chancellor of Germany, and the Prime Minister of Israel, individually, to come and meet with me in Washington. And I would listen, say, "What's your vision for what role you want to see America play? What role can you play to support us?" And then after that 100 days, come out with a strategic vision of what we're gonna do around the world with our friends. Then, together, we can confront our adversaries. But America cannot do this on its own, and we shouldn't do it on our own. And we need to rebuild these friendships, because the President has destroyed them, especially with Israel. So, those would be the first two priorities. One domestic, to rebuild our economy, and one foreign, to rebuild our relationships around the world. If I got those two things done in the first 100 days, you'd give me a week off. I know you would. I could go on vacation then for a week if I did that in the first 100 days. Other questions from anybody? Sir?
Uh, regulatory enforcement, the problem of, 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 of bad, of bad things.
Yes, sir.
How would you beat back the regulatory agencies that, uh, that just crippled all this?
How would I beat back the regulatory agencies? Same way I did it in New Jersey. Let me tell you what I did. Executive Order Number 1, uh, January 19th, 2010, when I became Governor of New Jersey, was to freeze any new regulation from any State Department or agency for 90 days. In that 90 days, I then sent my Lieutenant Governor out around the state to hold open meetings with Democrats from the Legislature. So, they had to hear it too. And we went to small business owners around the state, and we said to them, "Tell us which regulations are the most expensive, the most onerous, and the most ridiculous that you'd like us to get rid of." And my Lieutenant Governor went and held open hearings across the state. She came back with a list, and at the end of our first year in office, we got rid of 1/3 of all the regulations that had been put in place by my predecessor. With the stroke of a pen, I will do exactly the same thing as President. First day, I will sign an executive order freezing any new regulation from any federal department or agency. And I'll send the Vice President out to travel around the country and to gather information in exactly the same way we did it in New Jersey, and then come back and tell me which regulations do we need to get rid of across the entire government, whether it's EPA or OSHA, whether it's the Department of Agriculture or the Department of Health, the ones that are really stunting economic growth in our country. And we'll get rid of them. I did it in New Jersey, and believe me, New Jersey is not an easy place. But we did it there with Democratic opposition, um, and we'll do it in the United States Congress with whatever opposition or support they may have for it. And we'll do it across the country with my Vice President. That's the way you do it. And that's the one thing as President that's totally within your control, because those regulations are all executive branch work. So, it's time for the President to sit down and do that. By the way, I would also, on the first day, repeal all of the illegal executive orders this President has put in place, every one of them. In the back, yes, sir?
Talk a little bit about how you balance the budget?
Yeah, it, there's, there's really three ways to do it, and you have to do all three together. The first way is to get after our entitlement system. No one else in this race has put forward an entitlement reform program. No one. We've got 18 candidates between the Republicans and the Democrats. We got one entitlement reform plan. It's mine. Go on chrischristy.com, you'll see it. I proposed it in April of this past year. You know why? Because 71 cents of every dollar we spend right now in the federal government is on entitlements and debt service. To make you understand how crazy that's become, 55 years ago, when John Kennedy was elected President, it was 26 cents of every dollar. Half a century later, it's 71 cents of every dollar. It is bankrupting our country. And so, we need to reform entitlements. And I put forward a 12-point plan. Here's the good news for you this morning, two bits of good news. One, that 12-point plan will save over $1 trillion over 10 years. And two, I'm not gonna go over all 12 points with you this morning, so that you don't, you could stay awake, all right? But go to chrischristy.com, it's on there, it's in detail, and it's been scored by the Congressional Budget Office. So, it's not me saying how much it'll save. It's the Congressional Budget Office, an independent group, saying how much it'll save. That's the first way. Second way is you've gotta go through the budget, and you've got, get, gotta get rid of programs. Maybe not even programs that are wasteful, but programs that we just can't afford anymore. Now, I have experienced this in New Jersey. When I came into office, we had an $11 billion deficit on a $29 billion budget. Think about that. And it was bad. So, what did I do? We weren't gonna meet payroll for the second pay period in March. Second wealthiest state per capita in America, we weren't gonna meet payroll. So, I sat down for six weeks, three days a week, and went through the budget line by line. I cut 800 programs out of the budget in New Jersey. And believe me, it stunk, because every one of those programs had a constituency. Every one of those programs had somebody in the state who said, "I helped to start it, I benefit from it." And I got emails and phone calls and protests and everything. But I knew that in a state that was already overtaxed, that I was not gonna raise taxes to balance that budget. So, that's the second thing you have to do in the federal government. And I would tell you, I would tell every one of my Cabinet Secretaries that in the first year, their job is to return to me one penny of waste for every dollar I send them. Now, it doesn't sound like a lot, right? But on a $3 trillion budget, it's a lot of money. One penny of waste for every dollar I send them, and if they can't do that in the first year, they're fired. So, you should be able to do that. So, that's what we do on spending. The third thing we do is growth. Because the only way to really close this problem is not only by cutting spending, but by increasing economic growth. Because if we took economic growth from 1 and 1/2% to 4%, the amount of revenue increasing to the federal government without raising a tax would be hundreds of billions of dollars. And that would help to balance our problem as well. So, it's a three-step plan. You have to get on entitlements, because it's, you know, they used to ask Willie Sutton, "Why do you rob banks?" He said, "'Cause that's, that's where the money is." And in our federal budget, you gotta go with the place where 71 cents of every dollar is spent. Second, go to the other 29 cents and cut programs that are obsolete, which I've already done in New Jersey, will do in the federal government. And then third is to increase economic growth, so more revenue comes in without increasing taxes. That's the only way we get at this $18 trillion debt and our $400 billion annual deficit. Yes, sir?
You tweeted, uh, in the trade, uh, you just mentioned, uh, the story of all the higher education that was deflated by universities in Europe this past week.
Well, first thing is, I've said this, I said this on CNN and Fox yesterday. A lot of what's happening in this country is created by the lawlessness that's been permitted by the President of the United States. Now, when you're President of the United States, your job is to enforce the laws of this country, all the laws. Not just the ones you like, all the laws. This President allows sanctuary cities throughout this country, tells mayors it's okay not to enforce the immigration law. That needs to end. The President of the United States says to states like Oregon and Colorado and Washington, "It's okay to smoke marijuana if you like, even though it's against federal law." That's gotta end. Laws matter. And what happens, and what's happening on the campus of University of Missouri and a lot of other places, is that when people feel like they have license to only follow the laws they like, not only do they act in that manner, but also, the good folks feel like, is there justice anymore in this country? Does justice mean anything? Because justice is supposed to be all the laws being applied to everyone equally, fairly, without bias or prejudice. This President picks and chooses, and he sets an environment which allows those kind of things to happen. Also, I will say that even though I didn't vote for him either time, when he got elected in 2008, I was trying to find the bright sunshine in a, what I thought was a pretty cloudy result. I said, "Well, you know, maybe having the first African-American President will, will bring our country, from a racial perspective, even more together." And this President has done more to divide our country than he's done to bring us together. And, and I think the basis of that is justice not being applied equally and fairly. No matter the color of your skin, no matter what gender you are, if you believe that if you play by the rules, that everyone else will be required to play by the rules, then wherever the, the game ends, you feel like, "Okay, I had my fair shot. Sometimes I win, sometimes I don't." People don't feel that in this country right now. Justice has to be more than a word. It has to be a way of life. And as a former prosecutor, I could tell you that I lived this. That was my job, was to enforce the law fairly and justly every day. When I'd hire a new Assistant US Attorney in New Jersey, before I swore them in, I would bring that man or woman into my office. And in my office, excuse me, one of the things I had was a seal of the department. And I said to the person, "Read what that seal says." I'd say, "It says Department of Justice." I said, "Does it say Department of Prosecution?" He said, "No, sir, it says Department of Justice." I said, "That's right." Your job every day is not to prosecute. Your job is to make sure justice is done. Sometimes that means not prosecuting. Sometimes it means prosecuting even harder. Sometimes it means walking away from a case. Sometimes it means running into a case that looks difficult to do. Your job is to do justice every day, and I'll accept nothing less from you. As President of the United States, it's exactly what I'll say to my Attorney General. And the President, the Attorney General set the tone for this. This President and this Attorney General have set the tone for lawlessness in this country. Let's enforce the law, and that will change a lot of what's happening, whether it's on a college campus or in a neighborhood in a city, or at a school in a suburb. Let the President be the person who sets the tone for the fact that the rules apply to everyone, and that everyone has to live by them, and that it's the government's job to apply them fairly and evenly to everybody. That's my way of fixing the problem, sir. In the back?
Mine's about veterans, and they think, I've got to say, what can you do with, we lose 22 veterans a day to suicide. What are you gonna do to help with that in the mental health situations that are causing it?
Sure. This is another big area of difference between me and Secretary Clinton. She recently said, "There's no crisis at the VA." I want her to go to every one of those 22 families every day who lose a loved one to suicide. suicide. I want them, her to go to the families who have had their husbands or wives, or sons or daughters denied medical care at a VA, been lied to by people at the VA, and tell them it's not a crisis, because it's a crisis for them. So here's what I would do, and I'll tell you a little bit of what I've done in New Jersey too, to let you know I'm serious about this. First is, we made a promise to the men and women in uniform, that promise was, if you wore a uniform, you put your life in harm's way for your country, we would take care of your healthcare for the rest of your life, and we're not doing it. So in the Christie administration, what we would do for veterans is this. You take your veteran's card, and you go to any physician, any hospital, any healthcare provider you want, and you get your healthcare provider for you, and the American people pay for it, because that's the promise we made to our veterans, and we've gotta keep it. And we can't tell them to wait till we fix the VA, because they've been waiting long enough already. And we can't have more people die because they don't go and get mental health treatment, can't have that. Second, I wouldn't throw away the VA, though, because there's a lot of expertise in the VA, especially in the area of prosthetics and mental health, that are expert in that area. So I would go to the best hospital CEO I could find in the country, and I'd say to that person after I'm elected, you need to sacrifice two years of your life for your country and for these veterans. Come in here, the VA is now a hospital system, that's what it is. We don't need another general or admiral running it, with all due respect to the generals and admirals, we need someone who knows how to run a hospital system. Bring them in here and fix it, take two years and fix the thing. That's what I would do to help fix the VA. And on the mental health issue, let me tell you what we've done in New Jersey. We started a program about [inaudible] ago called Vets [inaudible]. It's a twenty-four, that's run out of Rutgers University Hospital in Newark, New Jersey, and it is run for the entire country. An eight-hundred number that any veteran can call who's having mental health issues. And when they make that call, who do they get on the other end of the phone? They get a veteran who is trained in mental health issues. Because lots of vets don't feel comfortable yet going to a psychologist, or a psychiatrist, or a counselor, but they would feel comfortable talking to a veteran who shares their experience. So we set up this hotline, it's been one of the great successes of our administration. We partnered with the Department of Defense on this to pay for it. For some reason, this spring, the Department of Defense told us they're not gonna pay for it anymore. They're canceling it. So I went to the Democratic leaders of my Legislature, and I said to them, listen, this is unacceptable, we can't let this happen. It's three point three million dollars a year to run this program. I said, let's let the people of New Jersey pay for this for the entire country, for veterans all over the country. And I gotta give great credit to the two Democratic leaders. We don't always agree on everything, but they didn't hesitate for a second. They looked at me, they said, Governor, you're absolutely right, we're in. And so the program has continued, it's going on right now, and for every veteran in the country who wants to use it, it's being paid for by the people of New Jersey. Now, it's wrong that the Congress didn't give us this money, but I was not going to permit that to turn down, turn off, and have some veteran call that number one night when he or she was in distress and say that the number had been disconnected. And the people of New Jersey have been willing to step [inaudible] for it. I hope the Department of Defense will come back and pay for it, but if they don't, we will. And that'll tell you what my level of commitment is to veterans. We will do what needs to be done to give them the care that they deserve and they've earned, and every time a veteran commits suicide, it is a sin. It's a sin, and the American people feel it.